Of reapportionment, statutory criteria and other factors. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Harrington. I will be the sort of the emcee for this presentation, supported by the other folks that you mentioned. Michael, could we have the next slide, please? So the agenda for today is we're going to talk about the factors for reapportionment that recommended by the Secretary of State. Some additional factors that the the board used in the 2015 reapportionment. Some community engagement with Mark Ms. Garcia Snell will speak about questions and next steps. Michael, next slide, please. So this is our timeline. In February, you appointed Mr. Nelson as the official county, a county official to report. You accepted his report on the reapportionment. Just to review, the county charter requires that if any one district after a decennial sentence said census is more than 108% of any other district. 105% of any other district that we are required to reapportion. After the decennial sentence census into 2020. District two is 108% of the other districts. We are therefore required to to conduct a reapportionment. We are now at the process of developing plans for that reapportionment to take place. The purpose for today's meeting is to have a discussion of factors which we will ask the PSU Portland State University to consider. As it drafts options for the commission and the community to consider as we move forward in this process. In June, we will have the development proposals. We will have community engagement through the summer and early fall and ask the commission to bring this back for adoption in November. That November date has some importance. Commissioner Willie asked an excellent question about the residency requirements. As you all know, that you're required to live in your district for two years before the date of swearing in. The date of swearing in, this this reapportionment, of course, is for the 2024 election. The date of swearing in for people elected in 2024 will be January of 2025. So anyone who's interested in running will need to know what district they're in before January of 2023. So completing it by November of 2022 becomes very important. Next slide, please. This is the relative population growth among the districts. We've shown you a slide before that showed that District two is 108% of the others. This shows that the growth that of District two, all the districts, of course, have grown since 2015. But District two has grown the most. I should note that these figures are the estimated population in 2015 is not accurate. That's based on on the 2010 census. And we know that the districts grew between 2010 to 2015. We just don't know how much. The proportions are correct. The numbers, the base numbers are wrong. Next slide, please. This is just to orient you that on the left, we have the districts before through 2015. And the current districts as they were changed after 2015. You can see that the districts all touch one another, which is helpful in as you reapportion, moving the district lines around. And that District two was expanded in 2015 and now, of course, needs to be contracted. Next slide, please. I want to turn it over to Steve Marsh to talk about the Secretary of State's direction.
So the Secretary of State handed down to the counties this year, a list of factors or criteria. We were kind of interchanging those those words. But the I I think factors seem a little more appropriate in that it's as nearly as practical. Because you can't satisfy all those all those factors in one plan. So these for the seven are first six are basically taken from the Oregon revised statutes that legislatures follow, you know, be contiguous. Utilize existing lines, et cetera, and be of equal population and that we've got some leeway there. So based on the charter, not drawn to favor any person or partisan concerns. Luckily, you're nonpartisan. And that makes for the best redistrict thing because you're you're not quibbling for for superiority in numbers. And then not drawn to the voting strength of any language or ethnic group. So those that last one is comes a little bit from the Voting Rights Act of 1965. So but they're still it's still under under a certain degree of enforcement from the judicial department of the United States, Department of Justice. Okay.
Next slide, please.
So these were ones that were used in 2015. So pretty much similar to what was used before. And communities of interest is quoted because there's not a firm definition of what a community of interest is. I often say it's in the eye of the beholder. So then maintain it. One that was in there was maintain District one as the only district with the exclusively urban and suburban without a rural area. Now, that's not always practical or perhaps appropriate. So but that's up that's up to you to consider. All right, next slide.
And I think we want to turn it this over to Amanda.
Amanda, yeah.
To talk about community engagement. Amanda.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom and Steve. So as you may recall, we are in a three-phase community engagement process around reapportionment. This first phase is really a smaller meeting, two set meetings with culturally specific community-based organizations and community partners to really talk about what types of things we should that they think you all should consider in the list of factors that you put forward to the demographer. And then Phase two and three will happen later this summer, and those are broader culturally specific and and then general community engagement processes. So this first phase, we invited several community-based organization leaders to the table to talk with us about sharing with them the the list that you saw, the the state Secretary of State's recommendations and the 2015 factors. And then we asked them what additional factors they thought we should consider. So we had the first meeting was really about what is reapportionment and why does it matter? And then the second meeting was really focused on getting information, their input around those two factors, and then also quite a lengthy conversation about additional considerations in the future community engagement that we'll be conducting later this summer. So in relation to the factor conversation, there are really two things that came out of that that to bring to your board. So one is to consider socioeconomic status, and then the other is to consider the rural urban divide.
Next slide, please. So these are all the factors that we've identified so far, put together on one slide. So as you see, the first seven were the state factors, and then there's three from 2015 and two that were suggested by the community. Next slide, please. So we discussed these with all the commissioners and the notations in red are some suggestions that we got. So we just compiled them as staff so that you had them in front of you, things that people suggested. There's no value when this staff isn't recommending these. This is just a means of notekeeping. I will note number 10. There was there was one suggestion that it be District one be allowed to have rural areas and another suggestion to to keep it as as 2015. So that that parentheses in the on the end should probably be in red as also. The those are the 10 that were that we have before us. Next slide, please. So the key questions that we'll ask today is which, if any, of the 12 factors listed PSU use when creating the options for reapportionment? And two, are there any other additional factors that the board would like to add? Next slide, please. So next steps, this this I just wanted to center us on this. So when we complete this process, we'll take the factors to PSU for option development. In June, we will bring those factors, what what the PSU drafts back to the board. So the board will have a chance to review the options in June. Once the board approves the options and gives us the go ahead, we will then take those options out for community engagement through the summer and into the early fall, and then bring the results of that community engagement back to the board. We say in this slide, November, December of 2022. As I said earlier, it would be our preference if we could possibly have that done in November to give people more time to decide on which district they want to run before the January residency requirement. Next slide, please. That is the end of our presentation. And if we could go back to slide 10, please, Michael. I thought we keep this one up for you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Yeah, I was looking at the number four, be connected by transportation links. Can you give me, I mean, how does that work?
Steve.
You, yes. Basically, you would want to be able to get from your commissioner or to your commissioner. If you wanted to go see them or they get are able to easily get to the to their office to meet you. So I think that was kind of the background of it. They also make good dividers sometimes. If you think about like I-84, I-5, even some of the the state highways, 26, et cetera. There, because often people don't readily cross though, so it's it and and actually join two districts. So have your choice.
All right. Now, I just that was the one that I thought I don't understand that.
Yeah.
But okay, yeah, the rest of them seem reasonable to me. So that's all I had.
Other commissioners, if you don't have any questions or comments, if you could just give me a thumbs up. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Treese. Commissioner Phi, can you unmute and let us know if you have any comments?
Yes, Chair Harrington, I actually do. I think I was wondering. I had a question, I think. I think this is something I asked Tom if we could talk about more about number two utilizing utilizing existing and political boundaries. Yep, I would suggest considering how the city boundaries are currently split between commissioner districts. And then, so that was one comment I had. And I think the other comment I had was around, you know, Aloha and folks that live in Aloha and the identity that exists, you know, identifying as a Aloha, identifying as a community of interests, you know, there's a real sense of community and pride for folks that, you know, live or choose to live in Aloha. So keeping these folks together, I think, would be very important moving forward. And then the other comment that I wanted to make was around, I think it's already a factor that's one of the factors. But I just wanted to emphasize that I think it's really important maintaining District one as the only district that is urban suburban makes sense to me. And then on on slide 10. Point number, I think, eight. There's a discussion about parks and school districts. Could someone explain this bit more for me?
Sure, I can. We got suggestions for various other boundaries that we could align with the commissioner districts. So park districts, school districts, the UGB Urban Service Agreement areas. And Aloha and Beaverton were suggestions to try to make their their districts, their their boundaries, boundaries also of commissioner districts to the extent possible.
So the keep Aloha and Beaverton in one district wasn't about keeping them together in one as opposed to keep keeping Beaverton whole and keeping Aloha whole.
I think that was the suggestion.
Which which Commissioner Phi was mentioning for Aloha?
Yes. And I think those are, thank you, Tom. Trying to figure out. Yeah, I think those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. Commissioner Rogers, how about you?
Thank you. I had comments, and I think you covered some of them. One was on three, that that's almost impossible to do because everybody defines community of interest different, but I but I understand having in the end number five. I suggested also as much as practical because it we're going to have to have some flex as time goes on, things, things change differently. I added in eight, the Urban Service Agreement areas. I think that would be interesting for them to see that, which is in direct contrast, maybe to the comments that are being made on Aloha. Aloha to me is is Beaverton and Hillsborough coming together at some point. And so when that is, I'm not sure, but I think we ought to look at the Urban Service Agreements. The school boundaries, we at least in the session I had, I talked about that briefly. That presents some problems in this particular district, and then Beaverton does have a chunk of it. Even though those folks are in the city of Tigard, they're in the Beaverton School District, and then we have other chunks. They're in, if you can believe it, in the city are in the Hillsborough School District, even though they're well away from the Hillsborough School District. So the the boundaries present a bit of a problem. District one, that was a request that Dick Scouton had. It was only done because of the he he would argue maybe differently, but it was done because of just the population numbers we have. But I I I would like to see District one take some role, particularly in the Cooper Mountain area, because that's going all to Beaverton anyway. And if you look at District three, you'll see it protrudes up above Shoals up and into that area. And I think it wouldn't be much of an ask that District one have that area, which is Cooper Mountain. And it would give some rural, and so every commissioner could speak to Earl to to rural. Number 11, well, I'll skip to to 12 and I'll come back to 1112 by including rural areas in each district. That's one of the issues that I can tell you each and every one of you that I hear is that it used to be a lot more representatives from rural area. We don't have that many anymore. None of us are farmers anymore, ranchers. So it might be nice to have that consideration and have everybody in rural. Number 11, I don't know how that fits. I'm not opposed to it, but frankly, and Pam can disagree with me. But I think that if you were to look at the demographics of of Washington County, you'd find that up in District one, there is a probably a higher income per capita in in certain areas. All the rest of us, we have areas of low income. So I would hate to see Raleigh Hills, Raleigh, you know, any of the Rawlies up there be divided. I I think unless we're going to take and have those folks to go up there and take away some some income folks and put them in other districts, I I think that would be a real mistake. So I I would hope that if we consider the socioeconomic status, that that isn't meant to gerrymander districts so that you have you know, areas that would come out of it. I would think that maybe we could extend. If I had my druthers, I'll just say it here because it's only a few times we have it. I would take I would take District one and move it out further. So instead of contracting it, I mean, there's some areas you could move south of the of the 26 and pick up, you know, like the North Plains or further on out, which Terry might not like, but I mean, that to me is a more logical kind of a thing to do. But I I don't understand 11. So 35, 8, 9, 10, 11 is the ones that I talked about when we had our meetings.
So could we hear a little bit more about what possibilities number 11 allows?
Yeah, I'll stop in there. The the problem is with the basic data. The things like income and that relate to your socioeconomic status, homeownership, kinds of homes. Those things are not captured in the census per se, but in a survey called the American Community Survey. And they only do 95,000 households in the United States. So the the as you get down to smaller and smaller areas, it's pretty hard to make a judgment on, you know, you couldn't do it at the census tract level for sure. So it's, I mean, it it's a little problematic to try to do it. I mean, PSU, when I mentioned that, they sort of went apoplectic, but you can ask, ask Charles Reinerson, who I believe is coming later. And at some point and talk to you about the information contained in the census in American Community Survey, so.
Okay, so let me try again. I feel like I heard an answer about how hard it would be. But as the previous slides indicated, this was at least one of two that was contributed from community feedback. So I'm trying to honor community input and ask what that contribution may be trying to get across. For example, we've heard a lot of information in the news the last year or so about voting rights and disenfranchising communities of color. People who live in lower income communities and communities of poverty. So when I read that line, though I wasn't in the room, those are things that I wondered about. So anyone who is closer to the community engagement, if you could please help enlighten me as to what you might have heard that provides this very simple summary or represents this very simple summary of consider socioeconomic status.
Sure. So the conversation in the first meeting and really the second meeting was centered mainly around District two, because that was where the largest population growth was. And the perception from community partners that District two, that there's greater wealth disparity in District two. And so the conversation was really about, is there a way to consider wealth disparity? And also socioeconomic status was also how that was discussed within the community partners. Is there a way to consider those things in the proposed boundaries? And so nothing really specific, I think, and but that was the the tenor of the conversation.
Thank you. So the combination of those two responses, then. Mr. Marsh, it sounds being closer to it from the data aspect, I'm left with the impression that while while we have adopted plans for our consolidated plan that did a somewhat deep dive into socioeconomic factors and poverty. It sounds to me if we are looking to use information for reapportionment, it sounds like there, Mr. Card, this is where I I'm not trying to be a lawyer here. But I'm left with the impression that with what I heard from Mr. Marsh, that there's risk involved. And while the community has given us input, perhaps we best not go there? Question mark?
I think that's a fair summary, Chair Harrington. The the I think we honor the community's comments. And then we looked and asked PSU how possible it is to understand. And Ms. Garcia Snell noted that the 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 comment was based on an impression of the population in District two, but not on data that would show that to us. So I think it would be challenging. I think we could ask PSU to do the best that they can in in doing something. But I think the best that they can is probably going to be limited because, of course, census data does not include economic data, really socioeconomic.
Okay, okay. I'm comfortable with that. Thank you. But I also don't want us to be asking PSU to do something that isn't, oh, what's that magical term? Practicable? So so I don't you know, your your key questions, which, if any, of the 12 factors should they use for their options for reapportionment? I just wanted to make sure they had different ideas, such as we've seen listed here in number eight of possible boundaries that might make sense for consideration, but really using their expertise expertise to say, these are ones that seem to honor the the communities of common interest and go from there. Does that make sense?
It does. Certainly, and we could ask PSU to to weigh in on these factors to see what what could be done, if any.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Now the light bulb's going off. That's 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 magical to me. Thank you.
Okay.
Because I do not presuppose an outcome here at all. My my, I think my last comment and question was if we could go to one of the slides that shows the districts.
Good. Michael, number five, please. There it is.
Thank you. One of the things that during the course of redistricting that the state went through that affected both the state legislative districts as well as the congressional districts, but also for the metro council districts. I heard from multiple cities to different degrees, City of Beaverton, City of Tigard, City of Tualatin, about being in being split by different proposals. And there is a lot of commenting going on about these new congressional districts and long and skinny, right? So it's one reason why I am my mind is, I don't presuppose any outcome through through this. My mind is really open. But I I do think that our city boundaries are pretty stable. And, you know, we have urban reserve definitions as well. And I don't want to add any further complexity on city representation. So trying to keep cities whole within a particular district might be a good idea. But it doesn't necessarily have to be absolute. But it seems to me that we don't want to take a city and split it into more than two commissioner districts, right? So right now, there are parts of Beaverton that are in District two and District one primarily. I wouldn't want to see us create a third district to have the city of Beaverton or the city of Hillsborough or the city of Tigard or the city of Tualatin. So to me, that's that's just where my head goes, which is not to say it has to only be in one, but Um, which is not to say it has to only be in one, but, uh, to the degree possible, try and avoid making it greater than two. So, um, and I do, uh, understand Commissioner Rogers' point about looking at the urban services agreements. Uh, frankly, I think it's going to take a, a while for transitions to be made along those lines. Uh, so I don't think it's unreasonable to try and keep the majority of ALOA together, uh, for the time being until the, the next. What's the word for dissen-
Decennial census.
Decennial. Thank you. I might get my tongue around that word by the end of this process. Decennial. Thank you. So those are all my comments. Have we made your job any simpler?
Uh, yes, of course. Can we go back to slide 10? So i- i- if I can summarize, uh, I think that we can take, these are things we can take with the caveat on number 11 to PSU. And I, I understand that there's not agreement on number 10, but we could, Steve, I think we could ask PSU if it, to just do one with, with, uh, with District one without rural and one considering some rural additions to District one. And we could bring both back to the commission. Last time I believe they brought five back and the commission asked for six. So we have multiple options. Uh, Steve, does that work?
I, I believe it does, yeah.
Commissioner Tries, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just looking at the map and, um, you know, I, I'm not sure if number four addresses this or not, but Highway 26 is a real, um, dividing line for a district. I think that there, my, the population base in District two is a lot of it on the other side. So I don't know what the, you know, what the configuration would be, but I think I don't know that I see in here, um, well, major transportation routes. I, I guess that would on number eight. I, I'm thinking about what I heard at CPO meetings where it's difficult to get to a CPO meeting in people's minds when they live on the other side of the freeway. That's, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking about. And it's not, it's, um, you know, I suspect it's that same thought pattern that people have when they think about crossing the river. You know, I mean, it's just a, it's, it's a state of mind, not necessarily of, uh, proximity or anything else. But I'm not sure that-
We go to number five, please.
There's so much of it down below.
Yeah.
But there's, but, but there's parts where it is more impactful than others. That's just, that's what I was thinking.
S- s- so Commissioner Tries, would you like to add a factor to consider physical boundaries? Or avoid physi-
Well, does that make, I'd ask every- I ask everybody else if that makes sense. You know, it, you, we can just have so many factors that'll drive everybody crazy. And I don't want to do that either, you know, so, um, that's not, that's not the point here. I was just kind of reflecting on what I've heard at CPO meetings and some of those things. So.
I could chime in, Pam. I, I agree with your comment on 26. I also agree with, uh, Shoals Ferry and where I was going with, uh, maybe some rural area. If you, you can't see me pointing, but if, uh, i- if you were going down from District one and District three, there's a little area, it looks like a lot big area, but there's not many people. It's where, uh, 175th probably will come through, it'll be, uh, where a lot of development's occurring. It's all gonna go to Beaverton. It's just right in the wedge. So I, I, there's some natural boundaries. Shoals Ferry, uh, 26, uh, I mean, maybe 185th, 200th, I don't know. There, there are, and I, I agree with you. It should be. We shouldn't be looking at who gets what. Uh, I did populations, population. Let's, let's make it nice and easy. Yeah. So that's my comment.
So it almost sounds to me like there are a couple of nuances that we want to make sure are communicated for possible consideration. What Commissioner Rogers is, uh, I think speaking to is if you look at, uh, this slide five, you can see Farmington Road uh, somewhat bifurcating. Right? You can see the little angle, uh, towards the bottom of District one where there Shoals Ferry is a boundary and just north of that, there's that little triangle or arrow piece. Well, that would be, uh, less than sign. And what he's pointing out is that, um, the urban reserves for that area go out to Tile Flat Road. And so why not make sure that instead of that area being in that yellow or what looks like yellow to me for District three, why not consider that part of Beaverton, which I think is, is, uh, part of the, the number eight language that you have. Uh, yeah. I don't have the latest printed off, sorry. Uh, whereas with-
On 10, Michael. Sorry.
Oh, at one point I, I talked about, uh, not only the UGB, but also urban and the urban reserves. And I think it just got documented as UGB.
Okay.
So, um, so that's where I thought about it for number eight. But that's, that's that commonality. And yeah, Commissioner, uh, Tries is right. The, uh, folks in CPO one and CPO seven have for years, while I was a metro counselor, and we went through reapportionment in 2010, we're talking about, you know, common areas of interest, north of Highway 26 versus south of Highway 26, which gets complicated when you're talking about everything else municipal. Uh, because of the, the strange boundaries of the urban unincorporated areas, the city of Beaverton, and that the urban services agreements don't necessarily simplify that. So it's a complicated world. Uh, so Matt, no matter what, we're not gonna get out of that, but there is a nuance there that is being referred to, just like we were talking about that, that Tile Flat Shoals Ferry Road area a moment ago. And I'm not sure how we convey that, uh, other than try and describe it through a lot of words here. So. Commissioner Rogers, other nuances perhaps?
Just one other, and it, it's all going on the road issue that Commissioner brought up. And I, I think you're capsulizing what I'm saying. And Tile Flat is, and you've got a big water project in there. It's all gonna go to Beaverton one of these days, as you see it built up. Another one that we have definitely split, and it was only because we were just trying for population, and I think it's very unfair, is, uh, the Garden Home area. If you go back to that map, you'll see it's split. Uh, I used to go way to the, to the west and then where District four is. So the, the boundaries would go out further. But if you take a look, there's a little wedge in the current district, uh, where it goes up there and, and, uh, we're splitting, uh, one extreme boundary. Half a garden home in one district and half a garden home in another. Uh, I've always thought that was not particularly fair to talking about communities of interest. So uh, this isn't the right place. I know we're talking about the principles and that's what we did, but it's just another example how we didn't use roads in a very good fashion to not, uh, split communities.
It'd be interesting to hear CPO three's, uh, thoughts on that.
They're not active right now, are they?
Not so much, but when I've talked to them, they always think they're in Pam's district, so that's okay.
I think, I think they're meeting tonight.
Oh, good.
Is that right, Amanda?
Yeah, they, they are, um, still an active CPO. They've just been less active during the, um, pandemic. They had some leadership changes and are still looking for leadership.
That's, that's what I-
I thought they had a meeting tonight.
I think it's tonight. I'm just double checking. I think they had a time change, but it is-
Well, so that's a third nuanced area. Uh, so if you need any help from any of us in describing these nuances, you know where to find us.
And just one quick correction, it's on Thursday. Tonight is CCI.
Thanks, Amanda. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Would you like to go? I want you, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Tom, would you like to go?
No, no, I was just gonna say we've got what we need. I, I want to be respectful of the commission's time, but please, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no worries. Um, I don't, I, I think I'm at the solution and I'm not sure about gerrymandering, so I'll stay out of that and hold that thought. But I have a question about the, the, the map on the, my left, which is the 2015 district before 2015. The red line is, I'm, I'm not sure, I, for some reason I just got lost right now. What is the red line depicting?
Yeah. Could someone explain for all of us?
I believe the red, the red lines are the district lines.
And what do the colors represent?
I'm not sure what, what the colors represent. I wasn't here in 2015. Joe, do you know?
Yeah, uh, those were different proposals. We had many proposals during 2015. And, uh, when we were looking for a map that would represent the change and kind of depict this, that was just one of them. And we didn't end up going with one of the proposals in 15. There was a modified proposal at the very end. So this might've been the starting point of that modified proposal.
So it actually doesn't reflect of what the districts were before 2015?
I believe the red lines do.
I think, I think it's just the opposite.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I think the, the colored lines, um, no, no, I'm gonna have to take that back. And I'd have to take a better look at that.
So none of us know?
No.
No.
For sure. Okay. Well, so the map on the right reflects the current districts, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Thank you. So maybe for the next presentation, we could get, um, the slide redone with districts before 2015 and then districts as of 2022. Cause we know who was elected before 2015. Great. Okay. Do you, did we take care of the questions that you had for us today?
You did, Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Fai, your hand is still raised. Did you have any other questions or comments?
Um, no, I'm having a hard time raising my question, but the second thing that I was gonna comment, uh, was something that Tom, you said with number 11 being a caveat. Um, I want to understand, we are asking, and I think I heard Steve say, we can ask PSU submit those and ask PSU. So I wasn't sure, are we submitting all these factors to PSU? Especially the two that came from the community?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Chair Harrington.
We'll submit them as modified, uh, assuming that no one has any concerns and on, on, uh, can we go to slide 10, please? Uh, on number 11. And I'm sorry, on number, uh, 10, we'll ask for them to do both, to includes one with, uh, at least one option with District one is only suburban, urban, no rural, and one with some rural.
I'd also like in number eight to see, I'd like to be assured that they'll look at the urban reserves map too.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, Commissioners, thumbs up with moving forward as summarized. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. I know there's a lot of scenario work. It'll be interesting to see how you can whittle all that down to just five or six proposed maps and whatever recommendation set you bring back to us. But we know it will be grounded in data and that, uh, it will, they will be proposals that are ones that you think are sound for us to potentially act on, some more than others, right? There's a sliding scale there. Great. Thanks so much.